Welcome, everybody, and welcome to our business meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hopefully, everybody's having a nice summer. We'll start with additions, deletions?
A motion to delete action item number four, the master plan contract award.
Second.
Okay.
Um, yeah. It sounds like, oh, go ahead.
No, yeah.
Derek might be able to help me better than I can say this, but it sounds like we're just not there yet. We're almost there with the contract with Smith Group, right?
That is, yeah.
But we're just not quite there yet. I'm excited about that. That's just the beginning of a long process that we'll go through. It'll be a big, long, public process with the planning commission. I will not be here next meeting, so I did ask Uta, who the former planning liaison, to bring that forward to me next meeting if I'm not here. But, but yeah, anyway, that's not happening.
Well, and we have the community development director who's involved in that, too. So, yeah, that, hopefully, that'll be on next, next meeting, and we'll get that moving along. Other comments on that? Questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to delete action item number four, master plan contract award. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that is removed. So we're down to four. Any, any other additions?
I have an addition.
Yes, sir.
I think we should formally accept Deputy Chief Ken Pellon's resignation.
Derek, without having anything being sent to us on it, other than we know he was leaving, or he has left, should we wait to have the formal, or, I mean?
We have a couple of retirements that are slated for the agenda on the second meeting in, in August. So because they came in after the deadline for publication, or deadline to put the agenda items out.
Is that on it?
It is. The intent was to put it on for the next meeting, so.
Is that good, Joe?
That's fine.
Okay, that'll be on. I think we have a couple that we're gonna have on there possibly.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing, I need a, a motion to approve agenda as amended.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the approving the agenda as amended? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Very good. All right, no presentation. Public comment. Three minutes on agenda items. I can't see, nobody behind me, behind the podium. Okay, no public comment at this time. Oh, oh.
Kevin Flavin Park Lane. There we go. Tonight, we're going to talk about spending money for the public safety building, and I believe that money is, well, among other things, I believe that's COVID money. And what I was hoping is a member of the Groseal Taxpayers Association, I hope there will be a, be an opportunity, such as a public hearing, for the taxpayers to ask questions of candidates for the township finance director's position. How might the new finance director implement a five-year plan, a multi-year plan, for all township departments and the township itself? Public interviews for the finance director would certainly add to the transparency and openness in how taxpayers' monies are being allocated and spent. Along those lines, the board is voting, as I mentioned, tonight to spend multiple hundreds of thousands of COVID dollars. It would certainly would be nice to have an accounting of those funds, how much has been spent, how much is left in the COVID accounts. And since September will be the half, halfway through the fiscal year, it might be an opportunity or a time for the board to update us on what, how, how we are doing with our budget, and what monies are, where we've gone over, under, and just an update on the financial situation for the township. And thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else? Seeing none? Oh, yep.
Yeah, just for the record, today Deputy Clerk Freel is out of town, and Elena Farmer, our election coordinator, will be stepping in to serve as clerk's representative.
All set?
Okay. All right. With that, we'll move to the consent agenda. David?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda 23-044, which consists of minutes of the July 24th, 2023 regular meeting. The check register is dated through August 4th, 2023. Zoning Board of Appeals member resignation and accept the retirement of the rec. department field and ground supervisor.
Second.
Okay, any questions regarding the consent agenda?
I just want to mention that Mark Tiso is retiring from the rec. department. He has worked long and hard in our department, and I think has been looking forward to this day, so we wish him well. Please vote to accept.
And in the zoning board of appeals, it's, Mr. Nelson is resigning. He's been on it since, I believe, 2020. Just, just time, he said, just time to, time to go and, and get out of township business. So he just wants to retire and enjoy, so good for him. All right, so we have before us a motion for consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda, 23-044, which includes the minutes of July 24th, 2023, regular meeting. Check register dated through August 4th, 2023. Zoning Board of Appeals member resignation and accept retirement of rec. department field and ground supervisor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Action items. Our first action item. Uta, if you would, please?
Yes, it makes me very happy to make a motion that the Groseal Township Board hereby approve the hire of Zaid Bay to the position of Groseal Township Recreation Director, based upon the terms and conditions listed in the attached employment offer letter.
Or?
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Derek to explain a little bit, too, but as you know, we have a history and explanation. We did have 26 applications for the position during our recent search. The position was advertised in a wide variety of locations, including the local newspapers on Indeed, on LinkedIn, in the recreation community trade journals and websites, and alongside the various universities who have graduates in recreation and facilities management-type programs. After the receipt of the applications, there was a blind review of all the applications by a group made up of the township manager, DDA Community Development Manager, the Recreation Commission Chairman, the Recreation Department employee Mark Tiso, and they all ranked the individuals from which we set up to interview six candidates. On the day of the interview, one candidate did not come, so we only interviewed five. And I was then a part of those interviews. After those interviews and discussions, there were two top candidates that then toured the township and the facilities with the Recreation Commission Chairman and members of the Community Recreation Commission, but not enough to make a quorum. But they did take the two top candidates around, showed them all the various facilities, all the, you know, things that fall under the purview of the rec. director. Following these interviews, we did have a second interview. Mr. Bay turned out to be almost from the start our preferred candidate. He has a very good track record, a good experience in the field, and he has a strong work history. His references were good. His, he comes to us from E-course, where he pretty much single-handedly developed the program that they have there. He's equipped with grant-writing skills. He knows how to ask for help when he needs it, and he also knows how to do things on his own when he can. I think he's going to be a very strong rec. director for our department. And Derek, if you want to add, because I know I missed some things, but if you'd like to add to that.
You covered it very well. I think he's gonna be a very good manager of the Recreation Department. The Recreation Department is very, very busy all year, but is extremely busy during the summertime. So with the vacancy that we've had since around May, middle of May, I wanted to extend a thanks to everybody that's helped out over there. It's kind of been a, put out a bunch of different fires, you know, to keep the program and the department running, and a lot of people have chipped in to assist with running the department, to keep it going in the interim until we were able to find a, a candidate, a suitable candidate for the position. So Mark Tiso, who's, who's retiring, as you guys had accepted earlier, he actually delayed his retirement until the end of the summertime to carry us through while we had this vacancy, and also through the busy season. Annette Tiso in the office has been wonderful in, in helping out and keeping the department running in the, you know, with the, the vacancy that we have. And then Brian Payette has been great with maintenance. And then also all the volunteers that have really stepped up to help out in the department, to carry things through in the meantime. So I can say we all are very excited about Zaid coming on board to, you know, provide some assistance, needed assistance within that department.
I do, while I can, make a shout out to our chairman Chad Novak, who worked tirelessly with our young pool staff to keep the pool up and running this summer. We did get a lot of help, too, from Kim O'Farrell, our former rec. director, and I, I have to say thank you because that was not something she had to do, but she happily did. And that's the kind of family, work-family that exists over there at the Recreation Department. Before we vote, too, I want to say that, obviously, we know that the rec. millage passed. Over the years, we've always just had this one rec. millage. It was actually very adequate until a past board, of which I was a part, combined the Recreation Department and Waters Edge, which was run as an enterprise entity before. So the rec. director's job became quite large after that. You know, before it was Centennial Farm, it was programming. Certainly, it was a full-time job. But after that, we added a marina, a golf course, a restaurant, a pool, and we added to that working with community groups on soccer fields, baseball fields, football fields. So it's quite, it's quite a job and quite a department. And, and I think the vote last week for rec. shows the strength of support for that department in our community. It was actually just a very good feeling to know how many people really do appreciate the work of, of a very small, dedicated department. So thank you again.
Other comments? Hearing or seeing there's none other, we have a motion that the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the hire of Zaid Bay to the position of Groseal Township Recreation Director, based upon the terms and conditions listed in the attached employment offer letter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Zaid, welcome aboard. And I will say, I had the pleasure of meeting Zaid already, and I do think everybody, he, he's impressive, and I think he'll do a very good job, and he seems like a very nice, nice guy.
And he's a brown belt in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, so I think he, he knows how to handle conflict.
Okay. All right. Action item number two, David?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the 2023, 2024 township budget as follows. To basically add a, a line item for financial consultant, and cover that with, in the amount of $125,000. And that will be covered by a transfer in equal to $125,000.
Do I have a support on that?
Support.
Thank you. David?
In, in March of 2023, there was a budget amendment that was approved to use $255,600 of COVID release, relief funds to balance the March 31, 2023 fiscal year-end. After the year-end audit was completed, the general fund had reported income that was greater than anticipated. As a result of that, for the 2022, 2023 budget year, COVID dollars used were only $130,600. That resulted in excess revenues in the general fund of $28,000. And this amendment transfers the remaining balance of approved COVID dollars in the amount of $125,000 to the 2023, 2024 budget.
Derek, do you have any, anything you want to add to that?
No, I mean, at the end of the day, it's good news. We didn't use as much as we had anticipated last year. Some of these things you don't fully know until, you know, the audit is done, which they're in the process of doing right now. So this is something that stood out. This is something Ann took care of before she left. So it, it's good news, right? We didn't use as much as we thought we needed to use. Figures came in better than we thought.
Good, good. Other comments, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to amend the 2023, 2024 township budget as follows. The line item 1010-890-817300, consultant and financial, debit of $125,000. And line item 1010-000699100, transferring COVID funds, credit of $125,000.
Sorry, I do have a.
I missed something, too. I'm sorry.
So I thought we were just returning projected COVID funds back to the budget, but we're doing that and in addition, hiring a financial consultant?
No.
No, no, no.
We're budgeting for a financial consultant.
Okay.
We haven't hired anybody.
All right, I guess that's where I.
This is so the funds are there, should we, should we do that?
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
Joe, are you? No. I'm sorry, too. We both popped up with the same question.
Same question. So you're good?
No, yeah, no, thank you.
Okay.
We have, we haven't hired that person yet, so we'd have to vote again to hire that.
Correct, correct. That's a completely different issue. So I, I was, I was through with the motion. Do you want me to do it again, or are we good?
I'm sorry.
Okay, if, if everybody's good with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, I've just been informed that for people on Comcast Channel 12, there's no picture, but that the TV crew is aware of it and is working to restore the picture. Apparently, there still is sound.
There is audio, okay.
So they are able to hear. I'm just, otherwise, I wouldn't make the announcement.
Make sure anybody that comes to the mic, please talk into the mic.
Talk into the mic so that you can be heard.
Can be heard.
So, thank you. I just wanted to let people know, in case they were wondering, the team is aware of it and is working on fixing the situation.
All right. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I move to award public safety building roof painting bid to Scheffler Painting for the amount of $112,400.
Support?
The public safety building roof is the original paint from 1990 when the building was completed. Paint usually has a 20-year lifespan. There are spots on the roof and gutters where the metal is exposed and rusty has occurred. Painting the roof and gutters will prevent further damage and additional repair costs. And on our last fire commission meeting, Chief Camilleri indicated that the paint is a special paint that's supposed to have added longevity. That was researched, and that is considered to be the best product, and that is incorporated into the bid. And am asking that that be approved in the amount of $112,400.
Okay, Carl, do you know what that product is, just for my own? I'm looking here quickly to see if it.
That the latex.
Yeah, yeah, okay. It's, it's here, okay. Good enough.
It was to power wash and apply two coats, approximately 240 gallons of share cryo HPA to approximately 25,000 square feet of roof and gutter surface.
Yep.
So state of the art.
Okay, very good, very good.
Was this a single bid?
No, there was, there was a second bid on that, but this is the low bid, and the product is supposed to be exceptional, and we're looking forward to getting it done, so we don't have any more damage with rust, and hopefully, it'll last another 30 years.
So we did go out for bid, and only two people put in. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Very good. Other questions? Okay, we have a motion to award the public safety building roof painting bid to Scheffler Painting for $112,400. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? We can paint our roof. I assume that's what all you guys are here for, is to paint the roof? Maybe not.
Raise the roof?
All right, and Joe, our, our master plan was the next action item, which was deleted, which gives us, brings us down to the fueling stations. Joe, if you would?
Based upon. Oh, I'm sorry. Based upon a recommendation by the Groseal Township Engineers, Groseal Township Board hereby approves a contract with low bidder Oscar Larson Company for the replacement of the fuel tanks at Groseal Public Safety Building.
Support?
Before I get into the explanation, just so the people know that are listening, it's not in the explanation, but these are the gasoline and diesel fuel pumps for the, all the police vehicles and all the fire vehicles, both that take diesel and regular leaded gasoline. The fuel tanks at the Groseal Police Department is more than 30 years old and in need of replacement. An advertisement for a bid was published. Four sealed bids for the fueling station replacement were received on July 27th, 2023. Based on the engineer's review of these bids, as well as previous experience with low bid firm, it is recommended that contract be awarded to the low bidder, Oscar W. Larson Company, for the contract amount of $224,047.88, with a 10% contingency of $22,404.80 for the total amount of $246,452.68. A total of $320,000 was allocated for this project out of COVID funding. And also, for the people to understand, we talked about the COVID dollars. This is not coming out of any item from taxpayers. It was all from the COVID funding that we got from the government.
Joe? Are, are these tanks gonna be above ground?
These are the above ground.
These are the newer ones, yes.
So.
All the newer ones today are going in above ground.
Yeah, so just so everybody knows, currently, there, we have, have them below ground. These will be above ground. There's various safety and insurance problems.
Hey, I'm not sure, Jim, they even put them below anymore for those reasons, so yeah, it's above.
This is the, the new wave. Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments?
Just, I learned through this, not, I mean, not just police and fire uses, the whole township uses those tanks, right, Joe, from my understanding?
Well, they're the DPS, yeah, trucks. I should have said a couple of trucks.
I think does, I believe everybody...
And there's a split when it comes to payment.
Eighty, twenty, something like that, seventy, thirty.
But everybody uses them, yeah.
It was helpful for me to learn that when I was looking at this.
Airport has their own tanks, but...
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
I've seen them sneak in now and then.
Is there, I assume, has there been any cost analysis done as to whether a fleet card system might actually be more cost effective than bulk purchase of petrol products?
Fleet card system at...
Well, you could issue a fleet card to each truck, police vehicle, and DPS vehicle, and they could refuel at our, at the local gas station, you know, instead of spending quarter of a dollar.
I don't know how we would get a lower...
Well, and I think...
We don't pay certain taxes, we don't pay certain fees, we don't, I mean, our, it was like hat, not half, a little more than half the amount when I was, I don't know what it is today with the prices of gas and every other tax they put on it, but it was a little more than half of what...
Yeah, I mean, if you guys, you guys know better than me.
Yeah, and there was, there's, there would be a problem with the engines, the big trucks getting into a gas station, getting out, because that was discussed.
Yep, I did have a conversation with the fire, actually, the public safety, the police chief, actually, I don't know that I spoke with the fire department, but the same concern was brought up about the equipment. I think that the police chief vouched for the fire department and, you know, trying to maneuver at the standard gas station, the availability, the cost, all that, you know, led itself to maintaining our own tanks, yep.
No, I mean, I'll say mostly through my experience at West Crawford Landscapers, it's nice to have your own tanks, like, especially when something happens, lights go out or whatever, it's important to have that access, I think. So I'm glad that we maintain and have our own tanks at the public safety building.
Other comments, questions? Seeing none. Based upon a recommendation by the Groseal Township Engineers, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves a contract with low bidder Oscar Larson Company for the replacement of the fuel tanks at the Groseal Public Safety Facility. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you. All right. That, we are through with our action items. Public comment?
Mr. Supervisor, if I could, I just want to mention, I don't know if we brought that up when we voted on the public safety building roof painting, that those funds are COVID funds that were previously appropriated.
I don't know if, Carl, I don't know if you mentioned that or not.
No, I did not. No, it is something that we voted on previously.
Right.
Yeah, public safety got the bulk of the COVID funds, certainly, for these types of things.
Should probably be repeated, these were legitimate uses for those funds. We did a lot of research to make sure.
Something else worth adding too, certain estimates were provided for these various projects. Once we actually get contracts in place and the projects are closed out, we know the actual cost, we'll be able to do a reconciliation on all the COVID dollars that we expended for the various authorized projects, and then have another conversation about whatever may be remaining, because fortunately, a couple of these projects are coming in below what we estimated. As the action item had referenced, just the one you voted on, we have HVAC here at Township Hall that's out for bid right now. We'll see how those come in. So all these things will be reconciled at the end when we figure out exactly what the total costs are.
Thanks, Derek.
Derek, can I ask one question? Derek, maybe I missed this in the beginning, but can we get a tally sheet then at one of the meetings, that way the people can see it too, to show that everything we spent on COVID money for the township, showing that maybe some of them didn't know that it was spent not using township taxpayers' dollars to get all these things fixed around here?
Yeah, and we haven't spent a lot since it was approved, because, you know, these things take a while to be able to get engineered and in the pipeline. So I don't think that we've spent anything since we last discussed the allocations, but we'll let you know, we'll give you a tally exactly where we're at. But I don't think anything...
But I mean, a sheet when it's done, we're all...
Oh, absolutely.
No, just when we're done, just so the people can see, all these were done by, other than tax dollars.
I wouldn't hate a tracker.
Well, and we have to, we have to give an accounting, I believe, back to the government.
We do, yes.
For these, all these dollars. It wasn't just dropped in our lap and, hey, we get to go our merry way and spend them. We're going to have to report back to them what we did with them. So that will be there, and we can do that. All right, so we're at public comment, three minutes, name and address. And I see a hand, and whose ever hand was up, please, ah, Kathy. I should have known, behind the podium. Kathy, haven't seen you for a while, how's your summer?
Busy.
Good.
Thank you.
I hope that's good.
It's very good. 26051 Thorcourt. The reason I'm up here tonight is, I think we all have seen what happened in Hawaii, and it's dreadful and horrible. And I was listening tonight to the news, and they said how the sirens didn't go off, and the water wasn't available, and I'm thinking to myself, we live on an island. I'm hoping that they'll do a little, a couple extra checks to make sure, just in case something goes wrong here, we've got everything going, because I'm sure those people in Hawaii thought they were all prepared. So I just thought I'd mention that, because safety is a big thing to me, as you all know. But I just thought I'd mention that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Was that a hand, Bill? Come on up.
My name is Bill Heil, I live on East River Road. I'd like to make comment about the, I've just back literally today, hours ago, from vacation, but when I was gone, I became more aware of the circumstance with the toll bridge. What I'm talking about there is a reduction in weight limit. I like to think that I've got a better understanding of things when I reduce the converse.
Is your mic on?
Yes, am I not, I'm not coming through?
I think Bill just got a kind of weaker voice tonight. That's all right.
I'll try to share a little bit more gusto.
I could hear you.
Okay. You can hear me now, right?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay. This subject about these bridges, I can reduce to two words. It's the same word spelled differently with different meaning, and that is wait and wait. The first word, W-A-I-T, is one that we need to look at with great care. We need action, but we need to get a lot of people together to make it work, and I think the single biggest issue is money. But the facts of the matter are that there are a lot of agencies who bear responsibility for the circumstance that we're in right now. There are federal agencies, there are state agencies, there are county agencies. And the thing is that you can read the enabling legislation that creates these responsibilities. And I'm not, I'm not trying to point a finger and make criticism. I don't think there's any gain to be had in criticizing people. But we're going to need a coordinated effort in order to get something done. And the facts of the matter are that I don't see any reason to believe that we can expect that bridge to hold up without closure. We don't know, I admit I'm speculating to a bit, till 2025 for more action. When I was away on vacation, I found out that there was pieces of the superstructure that were questioned. We have had these kinds of issues in the past. We've had a need here for our own taxpayers to pay over $9 million, it was estimated, out of their own pocket, that estimate for tolls. We know that that's a challenge to home budgets, and we have a significant portion of the people who attend these schools who are off-island. If they come and support their children in extracurricular activities and whatever, we need to figure out some way to make that work. I think that I have ideas, literally, and this isn't the time to share them, on how this could be alleviated for those attending school. But we also need to, I think, in our, my opinion, contact legislators, state, federal, to get them involved in dealing with the various agencies in government. While on vacation, ran into an article that said that there were 14,000 bridges across the country who have...
Bill, you have 30 seconds.
There are 14,000 bridges across the country that have had the same amount of delay and administrative problems that we have. So this is not a problem, it is not common to other countries, bridges as well. And we have to be aware of this, we have to do more, we have to do it now. Wish I had more time.
Thank you, Bill. Oh, Tim?
Good evening, my name's Tim Lorraine, 7929 Siding Court. Ute, I'm listening to your report with the Recreation Department. You said you had 26 applicants, and the Recreation Commission selected six to interview?
No.
No?
No, no, no. The administrative group, put together by Township Manager Derek Teal.
Okay, I get it.
The group that did line review of the resumes, and then selected the candidates, six candidates to interview.
Not a discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to be discussing.
It was just a direct question.
This is comment period.
So here's my comment, I'm saying this so that it's read into the record. As Derek alluded to, you've received three letters of recommend, or resignation, all from the public, from public safety, from police and fire. It is my understanding that Deputy Chief Pellon is no longer here, that he turned that in over two weeks ago, and it was not on your agenda this week. And so it's going to be three weeks in the rears before you accept his letter of resignation, and he's retired. You've also received a letter of resignation from the fire marshal, who gave three weeks' notice, and his last day is Friday. So you'll be accepting his letter of resignation, that position won't even, we won't even be starting to fill that position until long after he's gone. Your third letter of resignation is from Chief Camilleri, and he's given you 30 days. So if you don't expedite this, and take notice of this, and act upon it, you're going to have about one week to try to get somebody in there that's going to be full-time, because you're not going to have a full-time fire marshal, and you're not going to have a full-time chief. You're going to have a part-time secretary in the fire department office. So upper management will not really exist there. And I implore you to expedite this, to put this, to get this off the back burner, and to act on it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Other hands?
No hands.
No, I don't... Ted, did you, did you have your hand up? No. Okay. Okay. With that, we'll move on to the reports, clerk's report? Oh, we caught it the first time. Is there any, Elena, is there anything? Elena just wanted to get on camera. Thank you, Elena. Okay, now we'll do the clerk's report.
Thank you very much, yeah, so...
Yes, sir.
Byron Park Lane.
Okay.
I have a question about the, the action item budget amendment, and we're hiring a financial planner for the township. Is that what the agenda item was?
No, that was to adjust the budget to move $125,000 that wasn't used in the 23, 22, 23 budget in the event, because there is some discussion that we might need to hire a financial consultant.
And what would that, what...
And that, this amendment moved dollars into the 23, 24 budget in the event that hiring happens.
So I guess my question is, why do we, why are we hiring a financial consultant for the township? It sounds like a full-time position. I mean, it's interesting that we're moving money prior to actually deciding whether we want somebody to do that. And I wish there was more information here in the agenda and the agenda packet about what that pertains to.
All that, well, I'm not...
So it would be, I guess bottom line is, it would be nice if there was more information provided as part of the agenda and the packet on what, why we're spending $120,000 and what the need is. Thank you.
Hopefully, in his report, he'll say something about that. Other? Okay, we'll try this one more time, clerk.
I want to just clarify, the motion was to reallocate funding from one budget year to another, not to hire anybody. Nobody is being hired, it's a transfer of money on a paper budget. I just don't want people to get the wrong idea that we're somehow hiding something because we can't answer that question. I am very excited to report that even though we had only a 26.5% voter turnout, all of our millage renewals and millage questions passed on the Tuesday, August 8 election. The millage renewal for continuing off-island library services passed with 1,682 votes yes and 803 votes no, meaning that 67.69% of the voting residents approved that millage. The millage renewal to improve and maintain drain and stormwater management projects passed with 1,994 votes yes, or 80.31% of that vote, and 4,489 no votes, meaning only 19% voted no on that question. The township millage renewal to maintain current police department operations, 1,926 votes yes, 76, 77.54% of the vote, 558 votes no, meaning 22.4% voted no. And finally, the millage renewal to maintain current recreation department operations, 1,776 votes yes, 706 votes no, meaning 71.56% of the voters that voted passed that millage. What's interesting to note here is that because we are a general law township, we do not get a state allocation to run a police department, a fire department, or a recreation department, and that those are choices made by our community to have those departments on the island and to fund them through our self-voted millages. So it was a very good election. We are, of course, learning new election rules in preparation for 2024. We have still a process of recruiting for election workers, poll inspectors. The new election law makes sure that we have nine days of early voting, which means we have to have a precinct open for nine days prior to the election, which means we have to staff at least four poll inspectors, eight hours a day for those nine days. And so we are looking for people who are interested. You can be 16 and older, as long as we have three... You can be 16 and older, as long as we have three adults over 18. You have to be a resident of Wayne County. You do not have to be a resident of Groseal. And you can then sign up here at the clerk's office, and we will do all the training, et cetera, that you need to do. We do pay a stipend. We feed you island pizza and bakery doughnuts, and that seems to be something that makes everybody happy. So that's regarding the election. From the Community Recreation Department, I just want to highlight that this week is Senior Olympics, and that Groseal is one of the 18 Downriver communities that participates in the Senior Olympics. There are events such as tennis, bocce ball, horseshoes, peenuckle, and of course, Groseal is housing or hosting the ping pong competition on Wednesday at 1:00 at Centennial Farm. So if you're interested in ping pong, come on out and head out to the farm. They have a website, you just have to look them up, and you'll get the details on the Downriver Olympics. I think there are at least 20 Groseal residents taking part in the Senior Olympics this year. And with that, that is the clerk's report. Elena, you don't have anything? Deputy Clerk Freel will be back at our next meeting, but he's on a well-deserved break with his family. So that's it for the clerk's report.
Thank you, Uta.
Uta, I'm sorry, can I ask you one quick question-
Sure.
...in that report? I may have missed it in the beginning, but did you say, what is the, the starting age for that group for the Senior Olympics? What is the, when can you-
Starting age? You know what?
When can you-
I, I don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I believe it's in the 50s.
Oh, 55.
Yeah.
Downriver men and women, 55 years of age, and residing in one of the 18 participating cities within Wayne County.
Thank you.
Treasurers' report.
Thank you. For the month of, and I wasn't at the last meeting to give this report, for the month of June, township earnings were $109,793, with an average interest rate of 3.74%. And for the month of July, with a total of $24,350,000, $24,350,000 in invested, invested funds, generated interest income of $109,757, at an average interest rate of 3.85%. Summer 2023 property taxes are due September 14th, 2023, and to date, we have collected 18% of the summer tax rolls. And any distributions that are due to the school and the county have been, have been timely remitted to those, those entities. From the, on the DPS Commission, we had no August meeting, and our next meeting is September 12th at 7:00. And the only thing to report on that is that the road project is ongoing and continuing, and I think Derek may have a little further update on, on the status of that project. And on the Airport Commerce Park Commission, our next meeting is next Monday, August 21st. The work on the taxiway continues, and just to let residents know, that's, it's not a tunnel being drilled to Canada, it's not a trash dump that we're installing at the airport. When taxiway A is deconstructed, that, all the concrete, dirt, has all been the large piles that you see at, on the west side of the airport. They're being, all of that is being crushed. Those spoils are saved, and they're going to serve as the, as part of the base for the, for the new taxiway when it's installed. And for residents who missed the vintage market that was held at the airport yesterday, by all accounts, it was a successful endeavor, and initial estimates had the attendance at close to 2,000 people that visited the island market, or vintage market that was held in the, in the hangar, and that put a lot of people having, hopefully, breakfast, lunch, or dinner at some of our establishments on, on the Combe Street and elsewhere on the island. And, and then I want to address the budget amendment. There's been, nobody has been hired by the township as a financial consultant. That movement of money from last year's budget, where we didn't have to use it in, in the year ended 2023, we anticipate that the township will have some, some ongoing due diligence on some projects, and if the need arises, that, that we do have to retain a financial consultant, not on an, on, not on an annual basis, it's not a position for hiring, it's a, it's hiring, or retaining a consultant for specific projects, and we wanted to make sure that we had funds in the budget to take care of that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Trustees' report, Carl.
Thank you. I have the pleasure of sitting on the Fire Commission for the month of June. We had 87 EMS calls. That is one of the busiest months ever. July was a little bit less, at 70 EMS calls, and the projections are that for the rest of the year, they're going to continue to increase. We did have one Saturday where we had five calls for services, five calls on one day, all within a couple of hours of each other. Recruiting is something that's been the focus of the department. The department had three new applicants from January 1 through July 31, and the department held an August 13 recruiting open house, and I'm pleased to report that we received three new applications there. So we're inching up to that period or that mark of 25 EMS, and we're getting pretty close to it. The hope is that we can continue to maintain this pace, but those people all look to be good applicants, good solid applicants, and looking forward to having them onboard. And finally, a thanks on behalf of the entire Fire Department for the public support, the board's support, rather, with the roof. And the painting of the roof sounds like a small thing, but that's a little bit more than a half acre. It's been delayed as long as is prudent, and just wanted to thank everybody on the board for supporting that. Greenway's open space did not have a July meeting, and I have nothing further to report.
Thank you, Carl. Joe?
Hi, I sit on the Police Commission, and third Tuesday of the month, they meet right in here at 7:00 in this board, board meeting. You want to get that? And-
Don't do that disturb.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Also, got a few things going on at the Police Commission level. First off, tomorrow night's meeting, we're going to be figuring out what we're going to do with the deputy chiefs, how we're going to interview for that, but I was told on the 21st that Todd Brozek, who is now currently Lieutenant of the Police Department, will be the acting deputy chief, the interim deputy chief, and then we're going to go through that process. And if that process continues, then we will also figure out how we're going to promote the next lieutenant. And when I say figure out, what it means is who's eligible. They have eligibility of so many, what rank you're at, and so on and so forth, so we're going to go from there. Also, the, the third thing is, we're almost hiring a dispatcher. They did testing, and we've got a few more things to do before the commission then starts the interviews. So they're kind of busy in promoting and hiring there at the PD. Also, just wanted to let you know, I went to listen to Governor Whitmer a few weeks back, and I was really glad I went. Actually, I, I was half working and half representing the board there. Uta was, was there also at the event. And what we heard, it was pretty interesting, because I can tell you, on September 5th, between 7 and 8 o'clock, that at the Groseal Commons there, right at the corner of Combe, Meridian, Ms. Churches is going to be out there, and she is going to make an announcement on the budget and the amount of money that the state got for our bridge. Now, is it for the new bridge, possibly? She will speak on all that. I'm not going to give away any numbers, anything like that. So again, that's September 5th between 7, well, it starts at 7, but it's going to be an hour long at the Groseal Commons, and definitely, I, I'm glad I went and got some interesting info. I also met two bridge engineers there, which is going to be very helpful for this issue that we're going through with Wayne County. And overall, of course, Governor Whitmer spoke and had some good things to say about us here, and, but overall, I'm glad I went. I'm glad I got the information. It's very good information for Groseal and for our future. So that is it, I believe, for the formal report.
Thank you, Joe. Jamison?
All right. Good evening. In the world of Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we're nearing completion of the Gibraltar Bay Connector, and that should be completed in the next two weeks. The Zoning Board of Appeals will meet the 22nd of August, for anybody who's really into zoning. And then, so I think that it is, I think we would be remiss to not recognize the number of retirements and resignations that we've faced in recent history as a township. I actually wrote down the list of everybody. I'm not going to read it off. I'm sure anybody who's paying attention certainly knows who all those people are, but I think to what Joe said about discussing, most of the people that have resigned or quit aren't like maintenance technician 2. They're department heads, they're managers, right? And they're, they're career township service members. So people don't quit jobs, and they especially don't quit good jobs with good pay in a good place like Groseal. People quit bosses, and unfortunately for department heads, the board is their boss. So I think we really need to consider probably everything, so. And that concludes my report.
Jamison, just so you know, I talked to Elena before the meeting started. I probably should have just announced it, but next meeting, I put on the agenda that I want a discussion item on leadership issues, and I have a retention plan also. And so Elena put that on for next, our next board meeting, and I do think that's important. We do need to discuss it, and there are some issues that need to be brought forward, brought to head, and we have to be proactive in this, and I will explain the reasons why. And Derek, maybe on Wednesday, if you, me, and Jim can meet first, if you're free on Wednesday, now that you're here, I just want to just ask you that on this issue, but it's definitely something that has to be addressed, or we're going to have some issues. That's all I'm going to say right now. Thanks.
Are you all set, Jamison?
I am, thank you.
All right. Kyle?
Thank you. Kyle, I will say, I sit on the Planning Commission, which meets on an as-needed basis. There's no scheduled meeting for the next board meeting, but, you know, again, the master plan beginning is starting, hopefully, next meeting or the one after, a contract will be awarded to start that, so the Planning Commission will be meeting much more often and, and start working on a new master plan that hasn't been done in almost 20 years. So I'm really excited about that, and I really encourage people to follow that process, participate in it. It'll take about a year, and really looking forward to that. The, I was going to say, so I did want to give an update on, on the former Mclough site, the calcium hydroxide that was going into the river. I, my understanding is Eagle has responded to Debbie Dingell's letter on that. I have not gotten that response yet, but Eagle did basically admit fault in the way that they communicated about it. You know, they, the, the public, you know, the, the public statements out there suggest that nothing was wrong, that that had been happening before, but Eagle very clearly said, in my understanding of the letter, that, that the construction that was done there did exacerbate some of the calcium hydroxide pollution, and they're aware of it. So it's something they're monitoring. It's one of many issues along our riverfront that I monitor very closely. I, there's more I could get into, but I will leave it there for tonight and try to get that response and bring it forward the next time I'm here before the board. I will also bring up the toll bridge, so I don't, I don't mind saying this. Kevin, I know you had a question about the $125,000. I don't have any inside information, except for what's out there publicly. We're, we're, it's going to cost money to look into the toll bridge. So my understanding, again, and I'm saying this as a person that's just observing, I'm not in the inside of these conversations, that's possibly what that money could be for. We're not spending it tonight, but it could be to, to look into that toll bridge. So I mention that because I'm looking at the Township Facebook page, and I don't have all the stats on the Township Facebook page, but it has to be one of the biggest posts that I've ever seen. I think I'm seeing 717 reactions, 378 comments over the toll bridge lowering their, their limit to 7.5 tons. It's something people are very anxious about, and I understand that anxiety. I, I wish I could alleviate that anxiety tonight. Jim and Derek, if you have any inside info, I know I'd like to hear it. The best thing I can say, though, is that we're probably in a better position than we ever have been to actually look at the toll bridge, what's going on there, and, 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 and yeah, and, and try to come up with a plan over the long term, because there's no doubt in my mind, though, that is the, the most important issue that faces our, our community. It's existential, and it's something that I'm looking at very closely. So anyway, I just want to name that. I wish, again, I wish I could alleviate people's anxieties. I have them too. The best I can say is, is, is that, is that the more people looking at it, I think the better, honestly. So I'm glad people are watching it and looking into it. Finally, it sounds like Joe's going to bring this up next meeting, but I, I do want to bring up just general retention issues. I think Jamison hit the nail on the head on, on what the issue is. You know, I'm on the board too, so I'll, I'll take accountability on that. You know, there's a lot of issues why people leave. There's not one or, or another. I, I've seen it. I'll name some of the outside issues. I think COVID was rough on everyone. I think, I think people are less kind to each other, including, including residents. I, I see that wearing on people. But in terms of things I think we can do as a board to be better, it's, it's very clearly staying in our lane. I, I don't think we should be involved in the nitty-gritty of personnel issues. I think we should trust our managers to get things done, to negotiate things. If there's an issue, then, then we bring it up, but for the most part, in order to retain township employees moving forward, public safety being a big one that I'm thinking about, I think we just need to empower our managers better and, and give them the trust that they deserve when we, when we say that we want to hire them. And I don't know how to do that exactly. We're all elected members. We all approach our positions in ways we'd like. I'm open to like a resolution or something, saying, hey, we shouldn't be involved in, in these specific decisions when it comes to personnel issues. We should trust our managers. But anyway, I look forward to what Joe's going to bring forward in, in a couple of weeks, or any other opinions, and, and, and wanted to name that. So I will conclude my report there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Derek?
Good evening. Just a couple of quick items this, this evening. First, I was on a call with Wayne County earlier today, just going over some of the various infrastructure projects they're working on currently. Just a, a quick notice to the residents on East River and Manchester, they're going to be replacing signage, roadside signage, over the next couple of weeks in those areas. Don't anticipate any kind of issues with traffic control or anything like that, but if you see the county out there working on roadside signs in those areas, that's what that's all about. They're still on track to repave Parkway to Island when the Meridian Road Bridge is complete, which, by the way, is on schedule. Also, I'm sure residents noticed, the intersection of Ferry and Meridian was closed last week. The push notification that was sent out to the residents mentioned a 60-day closure. I've been trying to work with the county to get a more definitive timeline on that, because I'm getting conflicting messages with regards to the duration. because I'm getting conflicting messages with regards to the duration. The hope that, hope is that the, the duration of that closure will be significantly less than 60 days. Hopefully, it'll reopen actually this week, but there is some unknown issues with regards to gas lines in that area, as well as some drainage issues, and, and that is the reason for that closure, they have to rework the storm drainage as part of that bridge project. So that's what that closure is, is required for. So as soon as we get a definitive date as to when that'll reopen, we'll be sure to let the residents know, but I'm hoping that it'll be this week, and it won't be the full 60 days that was originally mentioned. So with regards to the Finance Director position, that position has been advertised, we received about 15 applicants, of those 15 applicants, only about six were actually qualified. Of the six that were qualified, we're going to be interviewing three, two prior to being able to schedule the interviews, they actually obtained other jobs. So Finance Market right now is really tight with regards to personnel, there's a lot of demand out there for those positions, and not a lot of people that are going into finance, especially governmental finance. So we do have a group made up of the, on other topics of, of filling positions, we do currently have the, the maintenance, water damage maintenance individual that was, accepted their retirement this evening. That position is currently advertised, and hopefully, we'll have that applicant interviewed and before the Township Board here within the next 30 days or so. So just two quick updates with regards to personnel. And, and along those lines, we don't wait for resignations to be adopted or accepted by the board, or retirements for that matter, to fill those positions. We usually try to act on them even before, you know, that, the next board meeting, just to make sure that we're not wasting time. Case in point, with regards to the, the Police Department, the retirement acceptance of the deputy chief, that'll happen at the next meeting, because it can't make the agenda until then, but the Police Department has been working actively to fill that position, both in an interim and in, in a permanent basis. And then also, if that individual ends up moving up through the ranks, that'll create a vacancy, not only in the lieutenant position, as the, as the trustee had mentioned, but also as far as in the rank and file. So it's kind of a domino effect, but they work before that acceptance actually happens to make sure that we're not wasting time with regards to filling those positions. Now, speaking to that, not always are positions able to be filled as quickly as we would like, because there might be extenuating circumstances that might lead to delays, so some might be filled quicker than others, we might have union issues that might be presented that we have to look at internal applicants first by way of the contract. So each situation is taken, you know, based upon its unique characteristics as far as that vacancy is concerned. So I just figured I'd, I'd mention that. The Treasurer had mentioned the ongoing road projects that we have. So the paving work on Gray's Drive, I know there were some comments with regards to the paving of one side of the road. In order to maintain traffic on those roads, we do one side at a time. Unfortunately, with concrete, unlike asphalt, you have curing times that can vary depending upon the thickness and the current conditions, but generally, it's about seven to 10 days before those lanes can be opened. And actually, they take samples of the concrete, they send them in for testing to make sure that what they call make the breaks. So they basically make sure that the concrete has cured over a period of time, significantly enough to be able to put traffic on it. So you'll have lack of activity for a period of time while that concrete cur, cures, and then they'll switch the lanes over. So in addition to that, sometimes we have issues like events that might use that road that we might have to delay work as well. So our goal, and ultimately, the contractor's goal, is to complete that work as quickly as we possibly can and get those roads open, but oftentimes, there are situations, whether it's traffic, or it's concrete curing, or, or other issues that might delay the project, weather sometimes can delay pouring of contract, of concrete and things of that sort, that might delay the actual completion of that. But in saying that, the next areas of concrete work that we're going to be doing are going to be on Cadillac Circle, Cadillac Court, Chatham, and some work on McComb Street. So those are the next areas, and then we'll move on to the next priority areas that have been established. So that's the concrete portion of the work that we're doing. For the most part, the asphalt work is complete, we do have some punchless items, we have some work on Bellevue that still has to happen, there might be some resurfacing of Bellevue based upon some grades that weren't achieved, so the engineers will be out there tomorrow looking at that, and then ultimately, putting a plan together to try to address any issues that might exist on that road. We still have some striping and some cleanup in other areas that have to be done, but for the most part, the asphalt paving for the summer construction season is complete. We will be talking about other priority areas at our DPS Commission meeting in September, when we'll take a look at next year's project list, but for the most part, we're going to wrap up the concrete work this fall, and then move on to the next construction season with additional projects to be discussed. So with that, that concludes my report.
Well, thank you, Derek. You're obviously back from vacation and plenty to say, and you saved me some, some discussions, so thank you. Yeah, Governor Whitmer's speech, and actually, that was for the signing of the state budget. So it was an interesting, interesting event, I, I was also invited to it. And the money, from what I understand, is for us to fix the current bridge, which will go a long way to helping us for that, helping Wayne County, but helping us, obviously. Just a few items, Derek mentioned Ferry Road and the closure, and for the people along Meridian who, the traffic evidently is coming down almost all the way to Ferry before they figure out you can't get on Ferry, and they're, it's creating a little bit of a problem. We've talked to Wayne County, and they're going to try and put up new signage north, much north of Ferry Road, so you'll, you will, people will be able to see that before they get anywhere near Ferry Road and not have to go all the way down and turn around. As you might have noticed, if you've gone off the Free Bridge, DTE is wrapping up that gas line along Jefferson, the, a big part of what they had cordoned off, that one lane is open now, and that should be wrapping up in the near future. DDA meeting is being moved from the 4th Thursday to this Wednesday, because the DDA needs us to, to sit down earlier than the 24th, or whatever that Thursday is, to, to vote on some things. So the DDA meeting will be this Wednesday, the 16th, in this room at 6:30. Kathy, in her comment, mentioned the sirens and, and, and the fact that they didn't go off in, in Maui. I know we test our sirens all the time, and I would certainly think that ours will go off, but it is something that, all these things that you have, you have to test them, you have to stay on top of them, make sure that they work, and they work at the appropriate time, and I, I believe ours do. Mr. Heil mentioned the, the weight going down on the, on the toll bridge, and, and just the bridges in general. Interestingly, I, I have been working for some time trying to put a meeting together with our state rep, Senator, federal rep, Wayne County, to discuss the future of, of the Wayne County Bridge and possible replacement of that bridge. And although all are in favor of it, getting, trying to get them all together so that everybody knows where we're headed on it is, has, has been quite a task, but I continue to work on that. We got that. Kevin, Mr. Flavin mentioned reviewing as we're coming up to the halfway point, we always have a mid-year review and, and discuss that, and I certainly believe we are going to do that again this year. With the Finance Director retiring, it may not happen at the same point that we normally do it, but we plan on doing that, so that will be there, Kevin. And with that, Ferry DTE, that is my report, so with that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.